Good evening. I'd like to begin our July meeting with the Pledge to the Flag. And this evening, we'll have Ava Hash from 4th grade of Elmer Wolf. She will guess you're 5th grader now, right?
Yeah.
You will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll begin our meeting with approval of our June meeting minutes and operating statements.
I make a motion that we approve the June operating statements, the June 17, 2024 council meeting minutes, and Quantum's financial statements for June 2024.
I'll make, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, motion's carried. Okay, we're gonna move around here a little bit with the mayor's report. First, we're gonna go ahead, in case you would like to leave and not sit in our whole meeting, but this evening, we have Ava Hash here from Elmer Wolf Elementary. She was our winner for the If I Were Mayor contest this year. And I'll let Laura do it. How many did we have this year?
I think it was like 26 or so.
Yeah.
Out of 26.
Which is very good.
All right, Ava, could you come up front? So, we are going to present to you the certificate of recognition for your outstanding essay with the five-year-old winner for the Union Bridge winner. On here, we also have a little pin, a little kind of a pin for you to wear. So, congratulations. I'm gonna turn around and see if you can hold your, hold your shirt up, because they've got a picture of you. We're happy about reading her essay for us. Also, I'd like to invite you on Tuesday, August 6, from 6 to 8, for having an activity in town event called National Night Out. And if you are willing to come, we would like to have you be our honorary mayor tonight and be mayor of Union Bridge for two hours. So, if it's your schedule, let us know. And we'd love to have you be our mayor.
Okay, if you, how about if we turn her around so she'll be, you are gonna be on TV, you will be on cable TV for Carroll County?
Hello, my name is Ava Hash. I'm going into 5th grade at Elmer Wolf. Thank you for having me this evening. If I were mayor, I would help the environment to be a better place. I would inspire leadership by helping the environment. For example, once a month, citizens of Union Bridge could volunteer to pick up litter at different places. We could also have a planting party where people could volunteer to plant trees, flowers, fruits, vegetables, and more. If you volunteer in either of those events, you could get a free plant. If I were mayor, I would help, I would have fun events to raise money for the animal shelters. Also, we could have a carnival to raise money for animal shelters, and every three months, we could donate money to them. I would make attending meetings fun. Once every month, anybody who attends meetings at Town Hall should have their names written on a piece of paper and drawn for an amazing prize. Being mayor means creating a better place, and a better place to me means a trustworthy community and a cleaner environment. Thank you, and have a great evening.
That is very good. It's very, some really good, interesting points there. Sometimes I think if we had giveaways at our meetings, we'd have more people attend. You know, give them ice cream or something like that. Because sometimes our meetings are very short, and we have hardly anyone here except for the Eckers back here most of the time. And we're very glad to have them, and it's really nice to have people come to our meetings. And as, you know, as far as working with the animal shelters and things like that's a good thing, because we have, this is a real need for the animal shelters to keep on existing in Carroll County and also in the state of Maryland, because there's so many people that abuse animals, and they let them go to a shelter, and it's just, it's just not right the way to do them, you know, take care of them. And there is, there will, will be an event this next couple of months at the Union Bridge Fire Company. They're gonna have another movie night, free movie night at the carnival ground. I don't know the exact date, but that will be going on, that will happen. And then we will be having this fall, we'll be having, as soon as the lady from the fire company gets with me, I'll get with Amy, and we'll have a drug awareness program at the fire hall, which includes everyone. It's gonna bring everybody up to date with all the new drugs and paraphernalia that's out there, the do's and don'ts. And the last couple of times we had it, it was attended very well, and we hope that it will be again, just so that parents are aware of what to look for, and not only the parents, but the children with all the friends that they have in school and everything. You see something, say something. And a lot of the, when you get to high school, you have the police officers in the school, and you have your guidance counselors. It's getting to be more of a problem everywhere that I think it's something that the children should be aware of. They see something, people need assistance, make sure that you let somebody know, because not everybody has wonderful parents like you have. So, everybody is looking for a little bit of help here and there, and it comes in very helpful. So, we thank you very much for being here this evening. You're more than welcome to stay for our whole meeting. It won't be real, real long, but like Laura says, we hope that you can make it on April to, August 5th.
August 6th.
6th.
To 8th.
On a Tuesday evening. National Night Out, and that's the same night for all the municipalities have it the same night, and there'd be, usually it's a pretty good event up there. Last year, it was probably 100 people there, or better, so.
Free food, live music, 6 to 8.
6 to 8. Hopefully, you can make it at night, and you will, you can walk around at night, and you will be the mayor of the town of Union Bridge at night for two hours, okay? Okay, thank you very much. You're more than welcome to say, we're gonna go over a meeting. On my report, I have a written report for Dawn for what's going on this past month. The only thing other I have to say is that with some of the things that's going on around town, ask people, if you see something, say something. Write tag numbers down. Everybody's got a cellphone. You see people doing things you're not supposed to be doing, take a picture of it on your phone, so you can report it, so that we can, you know, take photos of these people. We know who they are. Unfortunately, Kevin can't be around all the time. He's got a really tight schedule with everything that the Sheriff's Department has him doing. And I know some towns, you know, has 13, 14 police officers, and they still have the Sheriff's Department and the State Police coming in handling situations in the town, because they just can't do it all on their own. So, there's a lot of stuff going on around town with not just children, but some adults. If you see anything, take the tag numbers down. Everybody's got a cellphone, take a picture of it, record the time, make sure we got the time, so that the report can be made. And, you know, just like a situation, don't report it a week from then. If it's serious enough to report, report it then. If Kevin's not working, that's usually why we have a 911 number. You call the Sheriff's Department, and they'll send somebody out. This mean, he's, he's a part-time guy here in New Windsor. He can't be here all the time. I ride around town a lot. Everybody says I'm nosy. So, just, you know, keep your phones, keep a little tablet there, so you can write tag numbers down, take a picture of it, you know, and report it if it's, if it's something serious. If it's not serious, then Kevin can take care of it when he comes back to work, or another deputy or something like that, if he's on vacation. So, let's just keep that in mind. We also, you'll see in the town newsletter when it goes out, a couple of people have come into the office here, and they've been pretty nasty when they come in and pay their water bills, because their service had been cut off. And I've had in the newspaper and the newsletter that, once you come in that lobby, you are being videotaped. So, the people that come in here and act like idiots, they are being videotaped. They blame the staff here of being mean and nasty. And I told the lady, I says, well, when I look at the video, if she was inappropriate or Mike was inappropriate, we'll take care of it. They says, what video? As soon as I told them they were on camera, it was, the complaints were going. So, just to let you know, the parking lot and out here is video when you come in, that lobby, and that's the best thing we've ever done, you know, people come in, there are complaints. So, we do have the video camera there, and it is, it is camera. So, not just for, it's for the person's protection that comes in, if they have a complaint, but it's also for the protection of the people that work in this office, and then also us. Okay, that's about all that I'm gonna go over right now. Let's come up with something. Mandy's not here, so we'll go on to.
I'm up next, huh?
Yes, sir.
Gotta follow you up. That's, that's, that's some big shoes to fill there. All right. So, last month, actually, I'm gonna start off the briefing, which is kinda talking about this, not last month, the beginning of this month, I did Camp of Cops. And just because we have some younger individuals in the room today, I just wanna talk about that. 6th through 8th grade is our Camp of Cops. And it actually fills up in the first 24 hours, but it's a really, really good thing that Carroll County does. We actually have surrounding counties attend the Camp of Cops each year. So, you spend the whole week with us. It's $50 per kid, which I think is a pretty good deal, deal for a week long is worth of daycare, right? So, it's $50 per kid, and there's four teams. So, there's a red team, a blue team, a red team, or green team. If I say the same color twice, you correct me, but a yellow team as well. So, there's, there's four teams, and they all compete with drill and ceremony at the end of the month. So, it's like, you know, standing at attention, right face, left face, all the good stuff that we go through in the academy. So, the kids in 6th through 8th grade get to kinda see what we do in the academy, and they learn about everything that we do in the job, which is, I believe, a really good thing for, for the community to see now, because you don't quite frankly get that. You know, when I was, nine years ago, well, I've been on the job nine years, but before that, when I was in school, I had the opportunity to do an internship with the State Police. And I actually was able to ride along in the vehicle, because they had primary jurisdiction then. And we just don't have that now, unless you're an applicant and you're in the process of being hired. We, you just do not have that firsthand experience. So, at a young age, I think it's really great if somebody has an interest in law enforcement to join Camp of Cops and, and, you know, experience exactly what it's like to kinda go through a police academy and everything that we do, because there's so many different areas of our job, just, it's almost endless opportunities.
True.
So, just wanted to share that with everyone to start out with. So, that's also probably why you guys didn't see me up here as often this, this past month. I had a week long worth of camp, and of course, it's never easy. But I appreciate you bringing that up, but, you know, if you call 911 and I'm working, I'm gonna be the one responding as well. So, just, just side note, everybody knows, you know, I'm assigned to this area, and all the calls for service that come out in this area while I'm working go directly to me, as well as New Windsor. So, anything within town. And even if it's outside of town, a lot of times I go as well, just to, to help the crews out, out there, and they support me as well. Between June 17 and July 24th, or 21st, 2024, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 31 calls for service within the town of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, five were found to be reportable. I'm gonna sound like a broken record here, because three of the five calls were actually unattended deaths, unfortunately, which we actually still have to respond out to and investigate. But none were found to, to be anything where there was an investigation further. So, on 6/23/24 at 10:57 PM, an unattended death was reported in the 100 block of South Main. Preliminary investigation revealed this was a result of natural causes. On 6/24/24 at 6:19 AM, an unattended death was reported in the 20 block of South Main Street. Preliminary investigation revealed this was a result of natural causes. Broken record. On 7/124 at 9:09 PM, a malicious destruction of property was reported in the 100 block of Locust Street. A child's bike was destroyed by another juvenile that lives in town, and the Department of Juvenile Services was contacted, and a referral was completed. On 7/9/24 at 1:03 AM, an unattended death was reported on South Benidorm Street. A preliminary investigation revealed this was a result of natural causes. And on 7/11/24 at 12:04 AM, the Sheriff's Office responded to the 100 block of East Locust Street to assist with the mental health crisis. The subject was ultimately transported to the hospital for further care. Reminder that the crisis helpline is 410-952-9552. The Carroll County Mobile Crisis Team is open seven days a week, 9 AM to, or, yeah, 9 AM to 12 AM. And 988 is the number you can dial for immediate emotional support. Simply dial 988, and you can be in touch with a counselor who can help you. With all that being said, there was also a couple of minor things that were brought to my attention this past month. The porta-pot is continuing to be flipped over down at the Donna Wilson Trail. It was flipped over twice this past month, and we do have the subjects on camera. They are juvenile subjects, we believe, and I believe that I know who they are, but I gotta be, I gotta go around and touch base with them to figure out exactly who was involved. So, obviously, just a reminder to everyone, a lot of those things are on camera in town, and if, just think of something good to do, like planting flowers or things like that, not flipping over porta-pots and, and ruining the community instead of helping it. And then there was a dirt bike complaint. Everybody, just a reminder, we deal with this all the time, don't we? There's one of the biggest calls in town, I believe, is many bike complaints and dirt bike complaints. We don't have an area to ride a dirt bike. You shouldn't be, you shouldn't have it. I mean, unless you're taking it somewhere and riding it. They're not street legal. You need insurance, you need a registration, you need blinkers, headlights, you know, speedometer, all that good stuff for a road. You can't be riding an uninsured motor vehicle. That's the most important thing on a road, because if something were to happen to you or something, or if you were to cause an accident, then you're liable, and insurance isn't covering you. So, just a reminder to everybody about that, and that's all I have for this month.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments and concerns, anyone? Having anything? Okay.
You wanted to know where Brad was, but I haven't texted him yet. He's come.
It's a bad time of year, summertime, everybody's on vacation. Yeah, yeah.
While I'm here, is a power line issue being talked about on this side of town? We're kinda on the New Windsor side of it.
It's being talked about all over Carroll County. Talked about whether we're gonna do any good or not, but it's talked about, you know, they had their meeting in Westminster last week. I think the way it was handled was very poor, the mics, you know, but, you know, we're not the ones that line up the meetings. I see Frederick County's gonna have one in a couple of weeks, and they're doing theirs a little bit different. They're doing it, they're gonna have it at Lincolnor High School in the auditorium, where they can seat a lot of people. I couldn't understand why they would even go to Carroll County, the senior center, when you get 175 people in there and you have to lock the door. But we're not the ones, you know, it was brought, it was brought to the county, and the county handled that part of it, and, you know, unfortunately, they've got everybody in uproar. And I think, you know, people have to stay on top of it to see what's gonna happen, you know, get, just keep hold of your delegates and your senators, and let them, they know what's going on. They're totally against it also. The PSC, PSE's, PSC's gonna have the final say of what's, where it's gonna go. We have no idea where that's gonna be.
Right.
So, just gonna.
Carroll County is having a meeting August 22 at the Ag Center.
And they say that they were supposedly gonna have the route where it's, they think it's gonna go, but whether that's gonna happen or not, I don't know. That's, they might have, they may come with something that night, and it'll be changed three or four times before they decide what they're gonna do. Most of the time, that stuff isn't set in stone the first day.
I keep hearing chatter, they possibly went out the 15 corridor.
Yeah, they, yeah. They have no clue where it's going, and I, you know, I've been to those meetings over the years, and most of the time, it's not, nothing wrong with the people that are there presenting it, because they're just presenters. They don't have the questions. They don't have, they have, they take the questions, they don't have the answers. And there's even been times when they've had meetings like that, where they had people present it, and all your questions have to be wrote down and sent in, because they take no questions from the floor, which, that day, they did take questions, but they just weren't able to handle the situation. Unfortunately, well, I'm glad they're handling that, not us. All right, we'll start with Amy then.
Oh, okay. I have attended all meetings with, that have been here at the Town Hall, with the exception of the July planning and zoning meeting due to a medical procedure. And I just wanted to read something from the MML Conference. Thank you for allowing me to attend the Connect, Learn, Innovate, the annual 2024 Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference. I attended the opening ceremony where Governor Wes Moore spoke, and the Maryland Ballet performed. I attended the keynote speaker, Brandon F. Fleming's talk. What, he was an extremely enthusiastic speaker, author, and educator. I attended five classes, Elevating Communities Through Tourism, Partnering for Progress, Municipalities and Community Organizations Working Together, Learning, Creativity, and Partnerships, Pathways to Practical Resilience, Population of a Tiny Town, and Restoring Breath, Restoring Hope, and Regrounding Our Response to Drug Awareness. I went to visit many exhibitors in the exhibit hall, and also attended some mini classes there. Thank you to the people of the town of Union Bridge for the opportunity to attend the conference, Amy Caitlin. We will also be having a Standing Together Against Addiction Awareness Expo. As Perry said, it is in the works to be held this fall.
Okay. Laura?
I attended the MML Conference in Ocean City, June 23 through 26. On July 1, I requested a PIA for the month of June. On July 11, I spoke to electrician about beginning work on town issues. On July 12, we had the snow cone event. It was rainy and chilly, but we still served 50 snow cones, so we were happy people still came out for that. On July 12 and 13, I spoke to Donald and Lita about a parking issue in town. On July 17, I spoke to Joy, who is the property manager for Shriner Court. They'll be inspecting units on Wednesday, July 24, and will keep me updated. On July 19, I received an email that the electrical work was done in town as requested. National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 6, 2024, 6 to 8 PM at the Square. In disclosure, I won a $25 Visa gift card at the MML Conference from National Vision Administrators, which I took the ethics class that Perry recommended. I also took it 14 years ago, and I also just finished ethics class. I'm in a graduate program at McDaniel, and I just took an ethics class that just ended a week ago. And I almost didn't take it, because I was just taking this class, but I took the class anyway, and that was the thing that they said you should do, is if you receive a door prize, you should disclose that you, you won something. So, I just applied what I learned. So, for the first, the first day, I attended Wes Moore, Governor Wes Moore's keynote speaker address, and one thing that I know, that I liked that he said was, to know where someone is going, you have to understand where they've been. I attended the local lift, Elevating Communities Through Tourism and Economic Development, and they talked about having tourism zones. I attended the Partnering for Progress Municipalities and Community Organizations Working Together, and I don't know, I won't read any of my notes there. I have, I have four pages of notes that I had typed up for my classes. I also attended the keynote speaker, Brandon Fleming, who is the author of Miseducation memoir, and he had a lot of good one-liners. He said, "One thing we can say to people is, I want to know more about you and your struggles." He says, "People cannot be what they cannot see. People cannot be what they cannot imagine." He said, "Love is what changed me. Empathy is what changed me." And I took the ethics class, and I took almost an entire page of typed notes about that, which I think we should maybe discuss more at a work session, some of the things that we learned, because it was a lot of stuff, especially about, you know, disclosure, oversharing if you have to, things like that. And then I attended the Tiny Town Forums, and then the last class I attended was Leadership Skills, Navigating Dynamics for Success, and that just talked about, you know, when you have upset people talking to you, and how you can calm them down and calm yourself down and get things taken care of. So, that's my monthly report.
The one meeting I went into, and I saw you ladies sitting in the meeting, so I just stuck back, I just went right back out, went to a different meeting, because I didn't figure, well, no sense of all those being the same meeting, so I went to a different one. So, it was, it was a pretty interesting conference this year. Brett?
I didn't go to the MML Convention, so I have no such report to offer. It's a bad time of the year for me for that. I would like to talk about Ms. Kruger. She's in the audience here tonight. She's gonna do some construction observations, some inspection services for the valve bolt replacement program, and hopefully, the water main replacement, if we can coordinate them at the same time. That, that is part of the plan. Y'all have this in there, her estimated time material, because it is truly a time and material job, depends on how quickly they move, honestly, how many problems we encounter. So, the $19,500 is an estimate. What I need is really just council approval for, for this to.
In proceed.
To occur. We, we, we just really don't have anyone to do the inspection services, and GHD wasn't really interested in doing it, and it's not like you can just rent people anymore. It just seems like you can't get that service anymore. Ms. Kruger was kind enough to meet with Mike and I two weeks ago, about that, yeah. And, and we discussed it, discussed it, and we have a plan. So, that's what I need.
Okay, if everybody looks over that, we need a motion to accept the proposal.
Yeah, Form All For Him Environmental LLC for water main valve bonnet bolt replacement construction observation services. But we need, we need to get this rolling now.
Yes.
Because they only have till October, I forget the date, but in October, to complete this program, we have to spend the money by then. So, we need to get them started. It is 111 valves that they're gonna replace in the bolts in, and that's digging down to the valve, replacing the bolts. Hopefully, there's no other leakage going on when we uncover the valves.
So, we'd like to have a motion to accept the proposal.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal for $19,500 for All For Him Environmental LLC for the inspection services for valve bolt replacement.
Leave out the $19,000.
Yeah, because that's just an estimate.
That's just an estimate, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a company.
Then I just make a motion that we accept the proposal for the inspection services for valve bolt replacement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, okay. We'll get that signed, and we can just start.
Carrie, do you wanna say anything, or?
Well, I just wanted to come and meet everybody. I, I called Brett out of the blue, because I started my business last year. I had 22, over 22 years of experience as, as an engineer, and I.
You might wanna speak into a microphone, because you're gonna be on TV also.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, it is an honor to meet everybody, and, and thank you, Brett, for asking me about this. I was actually asking him about the PFAS issue. And most of my career, I was a town engineer for a fast-growing town in southern Delaware. So, I'm very familiar with the workings of town government and councils and police officers and whatnot. I did the inspection of new police station down there, and water mains, and all kinds of other things. So, it's a pleasure to meet them all.
And nice meeting you, because when you sent the email out, and I says, you know, I'm just the mayor. Brett is the guy that's in charge of water and sewer, because the meeting has to, you know, correspond with him and Mike. Wasn't that necessary for me to be at the meeting? It's something that Brett's in charge of, so I'm glad that you guys worked up the date and the time. It's, it was, if I could've made it, I would've been there, but it's his responsibility. He's, he's the water and sewer guy, and I would just be another head there watching and, you know, but.
I understand.
He's the guy, and you're the lady. So, thank you very much for your services.
Oh, you're welcome. And what Brett didn't mention is, we do have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday, two days.
Right.
We do.
Yes.
It's moving right along already.
With both.
Thank you.
Both concerns.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I attended the conference. I was involved in, or went to five of the classes, most of which have been already maimed, except for navigating grants and from idea to impact, marketing, community events. There was an issue with the air conditioning at the community center. About the same time that we lost power. I believe that's been fixed now, and everything's running smoothly. I believe that's been fixed now and everything's running smoothly.
Okay, I attended the town council meeting in June. I also attended the M M L Conference where I learned a lot. A lot of the classes I attended are, are dedicated to them. I really, really enjoyed the keynote speaker, Brandon. It was really enlightening to see what he overcome to become what he is today. So I wanna thank you all for making that a possibility for me as well. I attended six classes and of course, both, was there for both keynote speakers. On July seventeenth, I reported a light out on one oh nine North Main Street. And today, I reported the light out on the corner of East Locust and South Farquhar. So that's all been taken care of. Well, will be taken care of within the next couple of days. That's all I have.
Okay. And this, it's gonna seem funny next year for me, for the M M L, because this would be the first, the first year and since I was on town council that I wasn't, I'm not on a committee with M M L. I was on the committee the whole time I've been with M M L up until this June. Been on communications back when they called it communications. I've done everything except for the convention planning. Been on the board of directors, the executive board, you name it, I've been there. And I told them back in January, I was not gonna be on any boards this year. So that's, you know, it's about almost forty years of it and I'm not gonna be on any this year. I have other interests and it's changing times. So I think it's time for the change, to change without me. So I did attend down at Flood Zone over the weekend. It was the weekend for the Fire Company Boat Parade. It started last Wednesday. There was twelve, eleven boats entered this year. And again this year, they come up with just thirty-two thousand dollars in donations that will be split between Union Bridge and the winter fire companies again this year. So it was very successful. Friday night, the mayors were supposed to be in and I didn't get in this year. I have a problem with my one foot and my brother's already laid up with a bad back. So I couldn't see both. I was being laid up at the same time, so I didn't get in. But Mayor Brooke from New Windsor did get in.
Any council presidents post stuff in?
Well.
I wasn't in town.
I know she wasn't in town because I thought of that. I thought of that.
I was last year, I was.
But she wasn't in town, but.
We could have a special event.
I wouldn't mind. I really wouldn't.
It's, it's very interesting. It's, it's a lot of fun. It's, it's, it's a Wednesday, see Thursday night, it started Wednesday nights when they put the boats in. Thursday night, Friday night and Saturday were the dunking booths. And I think they said the dunking booth brought in like fifty-six hundred dollars itself. So, so that's very, very good. People really come out and support that. They, they had suggested last year that just Union Bridge and New Windsor Fire Company, the benefits them, but they were talking about